If you want to go ahead and get started, we can, it's 7:05 right now. So we can, if Raphael comes in, we can always, we can always take his seat. So.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the City of Pinole Planning Commission, our regular meeting for Monday, March 25th, 2024. There are several ways to watch the meeting. One is here at the Pinole City Council Chambers at 2131 Pear Street in person. You can watch it live on channel 26. You can watch the live video stream on the city's website at www.cipinole.ca.us, or you may watch it through Zoom Video Conference. And those that addresses HTTPS colon backslash backslash USO2web.zoom.us backslash J backslash eight six five zero five three seven five three oh one, or join HTTPS colon backslash backslash zoom.us backslash join, the webinar ID of eight six five zero five three seven five three oh one. And then you call in through area code one six six nine nine hundred six eight three three, or area code two five three two one five eight seven eight two, or area code three four six two four eight seven seven nine nine. And if none of those methods are available, you can always contact Planning Manager David Hanham at area code five one oh seven two four eight nine one two, or at D. Hanham at CI dot pinole dot C A dot U S. And with that, I will call the meeting to order. And then that's item B1, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item B2, the Land Acknowledgement. Before we begin, we would like to acknowledge the Aloney people, who are the traditional custodians of this land. We pay our respects to the Aloney elders, past, present, and future, who called this place Aloney Land, the land that Pinole sits upon, their home. We are proud to continue their tradition of coming together and growing as a community. We thank the Aloney community for their stewardship and support, and we look forward to strengthening our ties as we continue our relationship of mutual respect and understanding. Item B3, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Lam Julian?
Here.
Commissioner Sandoval?
Present.
Commissioner Bender?
Present.
Commissioner Benuelos?
Here.
Commissioner Martinez?
Here.
Vice Chairman Nis?
Here. And as per my usual ex parte notification, sent out message about this meeting to my email list. Apologies to everyone for the delay.
No. And Chair Benzuli?
Here.
The record show that all seven members are here and can take action on all items on tonight's agenda.
Great. Item C, Citizens to be Heard. The public may address the Planning Commission on items that are within its jurisdiction and not otherwise listed on the agenda. Planning Commissioners may discuss the matter brought to their attention, but by state law, the Ralph M. Brown Act, action must be deferred to a future meeting. Time allowed will be five minutes each. And it looks like we have one person where speakers will be heard on the card, and it's Andrew Ouch. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. Thanks. And you have, yes, you have five minutes, yeah.
Hello, everyone. My name's Andrew, and I just have a comment. Recently, being a student at SF State, and I've been learning about how it's more about planning as my major, and realize that especially in this state and in the Bay Area, we have a big issue with housing as a major issue, as it's very difficult, both politically and economically, to build a lot of housing. And I'm curious, one of the issues with that is, since the Bay Area has so many cities, it's hard to, no one city can address housing. Like, as our city, you know, Pinole, we can't single-handedly address housing. And my question is that, is there any, like, communications with other cities nearby, like Hercules? Like, any cross, like, planning discussions, like, maybe, like, the occasional, like, not even super formal, but even, like, having a coffee with the mayor of Hercules, or the Planning Commission for Hercules? Because I think it's important for other cities, for cities all in the Bay Area, to be able to collaborate and communicate, because it seems to be very so fragmented if we want to address the issues that affect us as Bay Area residents, as I know personally, a lot of people I know are struggling to be able to afford to live here and eventually have to live elsewhere in California, and still have to come here for work. And, you know, I think it's important that the first thing to do is to communicate with other cities. And, like, is there any attempts, or, like, future plans to communicate? I would say Hercules is, like, doing a good job of, like, with their plans. They're quite ambitious, like, developing a new transit hub, which is going to be a future train station for the Capitol corridor, and also ferries. And I'm wondering, like, are we, like, maybe discussion about how that would, how we could, you know, work with them and help them in any way, and communicate of, like, because it's just, it just, it just doesn't make sense to me. Like, you know, we're neighbors, and I would think, like, there would be some sort of communications on that front. And I just want to know if there's any attempt. That's the end of my comment.
Cool. Thank you very much for coming. I mean, I touched a couple of things there. I mean, I know, and I'm not sure how the City of Hercules is set up if they have a similar type of planning and building structure like we do. I do know from, like, our housing goal, I mean, I think we've, remember correctly, we've met a lot of our housing development numbers, the Reno numbers, and so I think these, fair enough, projects for the past couple of years have actually come to approval for housing around both, you know, below market rate and affordable housing. So I think Pinole, they've done a fairly decent job of actually approving a lot of projects. I'm not sure about the communication side between, between cities, though. Commissioner Julian?
Hi. Thank you so much for making public comment. I just wanted to let you know, we appreciate you coming out here and making comments. It's hard. We did just recently establish a subcommittee for community engagement outreach to specifically address that, of just increasing communication, rather, with the rest of the community, and possibly it would be a good idea to reach out to other municipalities to see what their best practices are and see how we can implement that here. I encourage you to reach out to any of us with any other thoughts and concerns you have, and how we can just do better, and David Hammond as well. Thanks.
Yeah. Also, there are other entities that Pinole and Hercules are combined together with. For example, you know, we share the wastewater treatment plant. And there was a lot of discussion back and forth. There were meetings for that, where we get together and talk about various issues. That's usually done with the city council members represented. When I was on the city council, I was on that for a while. And we went through a big construction project at the plant where we upgraded things. And so there was a lot of back and forth, at least with, between myself and the council members at that time. So there are some back and forth. That doesn't mean there could be more. I mean, your point is, is a good one, in the sense that it would be interesting to talk to them a little more than we do. We have the same rules, but we have different situations. You know, Hercules has a little, lot more room in terms of places they could develop, and they, and they have been, you know, as they can, whereas Pinole was pretty much built out, and we're only, really only have infill that can be redone, or places that are, had that have gone, lived out their lives, and now are getting redone, kind of like the, like, the K-Marts turning into a, you know, a big housing project. So there is some, but your point is well taken, that there could be more.
Yep. Thank you for coming out tonight. Another area where we're working with Hercules is the bridge that resides between Pinole and Hercules. It's a project that both cities are funding together to bring to fruition, to bring us the new bridge. So there are different activities, or the two cities are working together in collaboration. And yes, there can always be more. I believe, Mr. Hanam, that some of the commissioners, a little later, maybe in a few months, will be going down to a Planning Commission workshop with other Planning Commissioners throughout the state. So it's not just on a local level, but on a regional level here in the state. Okay? Thank you. Vice Chairman Nis?
Sure. So a few points. That workshop was a few weeks ago, I think. It was great. I'll be happy to talk about it when it's agendized on the calendar, but I don't think it's an item for tonight's discussion, unfortunately. But I think that Andrew had a few different points. It sounded like one was basically, are there sort of regional coordinating bodies? And the answer is that, yeah, there's a, the Association of Bay Area Governments, ABAC, that takes the statewide housing mandates and assigns basically required housing needs assessments to each city. So Pinole needs to build 500 units, and so many of these units need to be for low income, so many for moderate, so many for extremely low, so on and so forth. And then Hercules needs to build so many, Richmond needs to build so many, and so on. But I think a broader point that you also had was, are there mechanisms for more informal communication and collaboration, like the mayors talking together and having joint lunches or things like that? And that I'm less aware of. Like, my fellow commissioners have noted, there are definitely some more formal collaborations between the City of Pinole and Hercules, because we have joint interests in the wastewater treatment plant and the San Pablo Bridge. But in terms of more informal forms of cooperation, I'm not as aware of that. The Chamber of Commerce, to some degree, I guess. But I think that might be something that'll be worth looking more into, beyond just looking at engagement that can be done within the City of Pinole by itself. So thank you for bringing up the topic. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Lam Julian?
Just to add to Commissioner Menace's comment, there is actually a monthly mayor's meeting that's open to the public, and it rotates, it's Hercules, Pinole, I think Elsery, and I just dropped, drew a blank on the other cities that are involved. They are open to the public. You are more than welcome to come, make up, bring your concerns. But then again, feel free to reach out to any of us here, anyone at the city with your concerns and your ideas. They're always welcome. We can always do better. Thanks. I hope that helps.
Let me add to that a little bit. There is, at that mayor's conference, there is a citizens to be heard, just like what you just talked at now, at the very beginning of the meeting. And it's all the mayors in the central county. So you'd be a wide range of faces you'd be looking at, with different, you know, characteristics relative to their own cities. And then anything beyond that informally is kind of just up to the mayors themselves. You know, when I was mayor, I used to spend, I used to connect a lot with a Hercules mayor, and probably the council people do something very similar.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any further comments? Cool. Well, thank you again. Justin, does anybody else online, or raise their hand for citizens to be heard?
There's no one else online right now.
Okay, great. Thank you. With that, we will move on to item D, the Meeting Minutes, from the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes from January 8th, 2024. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Commissioner Bender?
No comments.
Vice Chairman Nis?
One comment on the first page. It says Rockville Contreras Uptown Yard. I think it's Uptown, is how that's spelled, not UPTON. And let's see, were there any other points? No, I believe that was the main point I wanted to make. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Benuelos?
No, I'm good.
Commissioner Martinez?
Done.
Commissioner Lam Julian?
Thank you, Chair. So line 30, page three, I think it should say, Planning Commission meeting, and the Planning Commission may discuss any aspects. Instead of but, change it to and. And then line 31, along with additional information provided by the police department. I rewatched that, and that was, they didn't provide additional information, and that wasn't the recap from when we double-checked with City Attorney Moak about that. So if we could just...
Sorry, which line?
Thirty-one, striking the additional information from it.
I'm sorry, what was the first one on, the other one on page three?
Page three and line 30, changing it from but to and.
If I can interject briefly, I think for line 31, the person who provided us the additional information was Planning Manager Hanham, who went by his own effort to collate the data, maybe not necessarily the police department as such. I think the minutes might be changed to note that.
I agree. And line 38, I think the ABC did determine there was, and it wasn't whether there was, and over, just grammar. So maybe...
Oh, I see. Yeah, it should be, there's no whether, really.
And that concludes my input. Thanks.
Okay. Commissioners, okay.
So I, would I, like, I think the comments, the edits are page one, the typo for uptown, page one, line 40, page three, line thirty is but and, page three, line 31. Is it, we're saying no additional information, or additional information was provided by Planning Manager Hanham?
Yeah. So striking the department, because it was Hanham that provided it, just for clarification.
Okay. And then line, page three, line 38, there is no whether.
Correct.
Does anybody want to make a motion for the, to accept the meeting minutes as written with those modifications?
Still moved.
My second.
Okay, please. Take a vote, please. Chair, Commissioner Lam Julian?
Yes.
Commissioner Sandoval?
Yes.
Commissioner Bender?
Yes.
Commissioner Benuelos?
Yes.
Commissioner Martinez?
Yes.
Commissioner, or Vice Chairman Nis?
Yes.
Chair Benzuli?
Yes.
And it's carried, motion carried seven zero.
Thank you. From the agenda, moving on to E, Public Hearings, there are no public hearings. So we will move on to item F, Old Business. Item one being the new parklet outdoor dining regulation framework, and it's an update on the Planning Commission on the progress to developing the parklet outdoor dining standards.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes. Before you, what I did was, I put together just a brief report regarding the updates of where we are with the parklet and outdoor dining standards. As the commissioners are aware, we came to you back in, well, we've come to you a couple of times. We've come back to you in June, or we've come back to you in April, to set kind of the standard and set the, some of the discussions that needed, that needed to be addressed. We then went to council on a couple of occasions. Yeah, the most recent was December 5th, 2023, to kind of give them an update of where we were in terms of, in terms of meeting with businesses and that. Since then, there have been businesses that we've met, either through interviews, personal interview, or in-person interviews, or telephone interviews. We've notified the 20, we, I notified about 20 businesses within the five corridors areas. And then this item is going to council on April 2nd for the, for that recommended, to determine whether or not that we are, if we are going to do dining, a formal policy for outdoor dining and parklets. So after that, then we'll be working on that, and then we'll be bringing that back to the commission for review and approval. But I just kind of wanted to leave it to the commission of, I haven't given an update in a while on this project. So just wanted to let you know where I was at. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. Commissioner, Vice Chairman Nis?
Just a brief question. I'm guessing that the summary that's going to be presented to the council isn't ready yet, so that's why we can't see it?
Well, no. I mean, it's, it's, well, it was kind of in between meetings and all that, and so the council hasn't. And where our agendas go land, and where their agendas land, so it just, it went to them first. So it's going to go to them first, and then come back to, come back to the commission. For, I'll be able to give you a more formal update of what the, of what the council decided, and then we can move forward from there. Commissioner Bender?
No questions.
Commissioner Benuelos?
So this is just a little update, then? Is that what you're...
Yeah. Yeah. There's no, there's no action required on this item. Just informational.
And is there any kind of draft, I guess, ordinance or something that describes the, the way that these parklets are going, or are you guys just not ready quite yet?
That part hasn't been, that part hasn't been, that part hasn't been, I mean, we've reviewed other cities and what they've done in terms of programs. But we haven't really put them in a formal process for the City of Pinole. And so we just want to make sure that the council, that's the direction that the council wants to go, and we'll find... and we'll find out on April 2nd if they want to go that way or not. So.
Okay.
Commissioner Martinez?
Thank you, Chair. I guess, in the subcommittee, the planning commission subcommittee, we put some work behind these parklets, and some of the changes that we felt were going to be needed by reviewing the various cities around us, whether the changes were coming in from San Francisco, or some of the ideas from On the Creek. So, there is a fair amount of work that's been done by the subcommittee on this already. So, I'll look forward to seeing that, Dave. I guess maybe in a future meeting for us? Is that a correct statement?
Yeah. In the future meetings, we'll be, once the council, if the council decides that they want to continue and move forward with the parklet outdoor, then we'll continue the work from the subcommittee that was done as part of the original, as kind of just the kind of the outlook, and to look at the other cities and what they're doing and that kind of stuff, but actually developing the actual regulations that we'll have for that, for this policy.
Thank you, Mr. Hanham.
Commissioner Lam Julian?
Thank you, Chair. What would a business need to do if they were interested? Would they reach out directly to the planning department, or are we just pausing for now since we don't have a direction?
In terms of parklets, yes. But in terms of outdoor dining, the city does have a code in place, as referenced in 17.68.05, or, let me tweak, try.
17.68?
Yeah, as part of 16 point, 16.68.020. So, we do have an outdoor. So, if somebody was looking to do outdoor dining, we do have a policy in place, or a code in place to kind of, it's through administrative use permit at this point. So, it's a staff level, it's a staff level approval.
And so, if a business wanted to just get more information about possibly getting or participating in the parklet program, they would be able to just reach out, or?
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Once we have the policies in place, and once we start working on the policies, then we'll probably send them out to the businesses and kind of let them take a look at it as well. But they all kind of, the ones that I talked to all kind of had a direction, because one of the questions for, a lot of the questions revolved around process, and what kind of process we'd like to see, and that kind of issue. So, so, yeah. So, you'll, and you'll, and you'll probably see that at your next meeting. So, to give you, to show you what the, what the council decided, and where we'll be going with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Sandoval?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah. So, I was just looking for some clarification, if available, how different the process is when there, when an encroachment is involved. I just noticed that a lot of these businesses are along a public right of way. I just kind of wanted to know how, how different that process would be, if it's just kind of like a business that's using a, an existing parklet, enclosed in like a little parking lot versus like on, on the street?
Yeah. I mean, there's, I mean, well, right now, outdoor dining, we, most of the outdoor dining, issues that we, or regulations that we have deal with, with the guidelines on the sidewalk of their businesses. They're not so much in the public right of way. In the public right of way, there'd be a whole separate scenario through public works that we would have to go through in terms of, you know, liability and encroachment and all those types of things. So, right now, there's no real formal policy to do that. That's why if they, if, I know some of these businesses, it's, it wasn't prudent for them to even look at San Pablo, because their businesses are way back on the, way back, their parking lots front the San Pablo, and their restaurants back. But they were potentially looking at, maybe, maybe doing something in a portion of their parking lot, or something of that nature. So, that will, those policies will all be flushed out. But currently, our policy is mainly for outdoor dining on sidewalks at this point. We, we really don't have anything in parking lots. The only reason why Tina's and, and Sue's place were outside of that realm was because they were under the emergency ordinance under COVID. So, that's why they're in that regard.
Thank you. Yeah. No further questions.
I just have one on table 1 of page 3. How are the businesses that were interviewed selected, or were there more that were considered or not considered, or?
I mean, we just kind of just went down kind of the road and kind of just see, I mean, there was no formal, there was no formal, you know, we're picking these. It was more of a, you know, restaurants in that particular area, whether it was on San Pablo Avenue and downtown Pinot, within the Fitzgerald Drive corridor, or the Apian Way corridor. So, there was no really specific reasoning. Just as long as they met the criteria, they were in that corridor.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. If there's no other questions or comments, I think we can move on to the next item? Is there public comment for information itself? Okay. Justin, is there anybody raising hand for public comment?
There's no one online right now.
Okay. Then I think we can move on to the next item, item 2, update of the Objective Development Design Standards, the ODDS. Update the planning commission on the progress of developing objective development design standards.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In this, in this item, we work in this, in this item, at least the subcommittee has, we've really worked diligently on trying to get this, try to, this was, this is a pretty big lift for the city in terms of what we're doing, and reviewing all of our documents to meet our new state laws in determining objective standards. And so, what we, is part of the, is part of the, you know, SB 330 and SB 335, as well as the Affordable, the Affordable Housing Act. And so, basically, what we've done is, is that I've kind of given you, you've seen this kind of the background before, just kind of explaining the subjective and objective standards, and what the bills are that we're looking at, as well as the discretionary versus ministerial review as part of that process. So, you've seen kind of all that. As part of the analysis, the, you know, we had a consultant at WRT and Sustainable Community Planning to evaluate and make recommendations. They made their recommendations, and that's what the basis of the work of the subcommittee is looking at right now, in terms of what, of what needs to be changed to be more objective. And so, basically, right now, I just kind of want to go over the timeline and where we're at. Basically, the, the committee has completed its review of the three corridor specific plan, the Old Town Design Guidelines, and the zoning code. We're still working on the, on the subdivision code, which is kind of, I've got a lot of questions for Alex and Sanjay on that, on those items regarding that area. But, and then, a lot of the refinement, which we're starting on the other documents right now. So, we're kind of, hopefully, that we will be able to, you know, get through the subdivision code, and then finish the, you know, finish the, the rest of the, the rest of the work. As you can see, I've outlined kind of the remaining actions of what needs to get done, and when we think, when we think we're going to have this completed. So, if you have any questions regarding those, that just stands my recommendation, my recommendations, I really don't have one at this point, except to just keep working in collaboration with the ad hoc committee, and, and keep moving this project forward. So, if you have any questions, that ends my presentation. Thank you.
Commissioners Sandoval, any questions or comments?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Lam Julian?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Martinez?
None at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Benwellis?
I think I'll hold my comments for the time being. There's a lot of things that I'm just kind of wondering about. And you know, just the whole level, and this is kind of based on something that I was at. I'm not sure if all of you were at the one, that one talk at the planning commission thing that we went to about this. And there are, to me, there were a lot of problems with it. And I talked to that architect that presented that, and she wasn't a big proponent of it. So, we were, we went and talked in our little architect language, you know, it was very, she was kind of having the same questions I had, even though she presented it. And she printed it pretty well, you know, but there are other things involved with it. I think I'm going to just kind of leave those to questions a little bit later, as opposed to making comments on them.
Vice Chairman Menace?
I'm not really sure how much I can say here, being on the subcommittee.
You can fully say whatever you want, because this is a noticed agenda item. So, you can share whatever your thoughts are.
All right. Well, I'd like to start by thanking Commissioner Bender and Fly Manager Hanham for working together, as you know, a group going through week after week, and month after month, at this point, of subcommittee meetings to get through the zoning and subdivision code, and all the various codes. I'm still not 100% sure we're going to be all the way to objective, but I think we're trying, and we're going to be a lot closer at the end of it than we were at the start of it. I understand Commissioners Benwellis, Commissioner Benwellis's point about the difficulty of using certain concrete criteria, but at the same time, it's what state law requires. And unless we want to not have objective standards, and just let people use what standards they like, we sort of don't have very much choice, it seems like to me. And that's all my comments for the moment.
Commissioner Bender?
I don't really have anything to say, other than it's an exhausting process, to say the least. And I will sort of echo Commissioner Menace's comments about, if you don't have the objective standards in place, developers are free to come in and basically start dictating what they will be doing, depending on how they apply.
Great. I think, like, how about I'm hearing, after Commissioner Menace and Vice Chairman Menace, is there enough time in July and August to go through the whole thing and vote on, is there going to be that much discussion? Is there enough time to go through the whole odds? I can see there'd be a lot of discussion and changes to this. Well, not changes, but discussion on it.
Yeah. I mean, they, I mean, if it, if it means that we got to have another meeting, or we need to call another meeting to go over it, then we will. Yeah. I mean, we will, you know, probably break it up into some, into some areas, and, and go from there. So, so we're working on that right now. And that's, so, of how we present it to you, and, and that's kind of what we're going to go over to see how, because it is a lot of material to go over. So, it's how we're going to get it to you, and making your recommendations, and doing all that kind of stuff. So, we're, I'm working on that right now.
And how, do we have a timing of when that has to be adopted? Is it the sunset of the Senate Bill 330?
No, there's not really a timeline, but the sooner we get it done, the sooner that we're in, we're in consistency with SB 330 and SB 330, or SB 35, so that we don't get run over by, that we don't get run over by developers and the development community. So, because in some other cities that don't have those development standards, they are pretty much dictating what they do and how they do it. So, I mean, there are other laws in place that can allow them to do different things with density bonus, and waivers and concessions and all that. But it's just another, it'd be another, if we don't have our objective standards, it's just another thing that they don't have to abide by. So, that's kind of what we're, that's, that's why we're doing this.
Yeah. Okay. Fair point. Any other questions? Justin, is there any in the audience or online that has public comment?
Yeah, there's no one online right now.
Unless there's any other comments, then close item F2, the old business? Oh, sorry. Vice Chairman Menace?
Sure. I just wanted to reply briefly to Chairman Zoey's comment about, basically, the amount of time it would take to go over this whole thing once it's done. And I think part of that depends on what level of detail the commission wants to go into when it's reviewing it. If they want to go over all the documents line by line, it's definitely going to take multiple meetings. If the commission's okay with going over summaries line by line, it might just take two or three. But there's a lot of stuff there. That's all.
Cool. Yeah. Commissioner Martinez?
Thank you, Chair. I guess, in a perfect world, because as Commissioner Menace has mentioned, there's a lot of information in these packages. And I guess, it would be possible, Planning Manager Hanham, if we could maybe set together a workshop to introduce the concepts of, instead of it being the traditional way that we would review information, we've elected to put, put options for the developers, and these, these are the different options that we have to choose from. Something that we worked on, but then introduce that as a package to the group as a whole, so they understand that when we put these packages together of choices, they would understand the logic and the reasoning behind it. So, is that something that would be possible to put together as a preview before we go live? Mr. Hanham?
Yeah. I mean, if the city, if the commission wants to do a whole little workshop, and we can do, we can do that. Just, we'll just put it in the timeline, and we'll, you know, we'll, you know, just, well, that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out right now, to be honest, of how I'm going to group all this and bring it to you. So, it could be that it's a workshop, could be a couple of meetings, it could be, you know, just something we're going, staff is going over right now.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
I just have some questions on, you know, I'm hearing that there's a big pile of stuff coming. And that's what I heard from other people in other cities that are going through this. It's a big pile of stuff. And it kind of depends on each city, in a sense, because of whatever their current building stock is, and, and whether there's historical impact on that, whether there's just areas that were developed at a certain time that made it historical by default, you know, and how those, how are areas that are being developed within these subareas are being, what are the guidelines, or not, we're not supposed to say guidelines with objectives, but what are the requirements, I guess we'll have to say, to, to do that. And the impression that I've been getting from, from other people in other cities and other architects, is that depending on how a city figures this out, and how intense they are, they could be so intense that they become subjective by default, because they were too intense. So, it's something, that's something that if we're, if we're really going to go through and try to generate some real objective standards, we really have to make sure that we maintain that objectivity, because it's very easy to go off on another path on those. I would also like to know what, you know, given Pinot, as Pinot is, are there some overarching things that are being considered in terms of kind of like the beginning steps, relative to the current building stock that we have now? At that meeting, they gave an example, a guy from Santa Ana gave an example of what they did in their city. And they had developed an area where they had some really large multi-housing projects. And being Santa Ana, it was, you know, it was kind of mission-y, kind of neo-mission-y kind of looking stuff. But I told that architect, you know, I could have blindfolded myself, dropped myself in the middle of that project, and I could have been in Santa Ana, I could have been in Sacramento, I could have been in Santa Rosa. Because it was so generic, it didn't really matter that it was in Santa Ana. It was just because of their, their, their objective standards were so generic, it didn't, it kind of took away the meaning of where it was going. And so, that's something that we have to think about, because, you know, the state doesn't really care what these look like. They're, they're, they're panicking, they're just looking for boxes for bodies to go in. And so, our questions are, do we really want to have something that looks like that? Is that what we're looking for? You know, because that's what the state wants. So, it's, it's, it's not taking into account the character of the individual cities or areas that, that these are going, that people are going to be developing. And part of the reason people come and live here is because of it's a certain, you know, looks a certain way, or it's a kind of place. And part of this is the, the dumbing down of all that stuff. So, that's another thing we have to keep in mind, that, you know, if you want to be like everywhere else, you know, sure, let's cut it in half, turn it in, get everyone to vote on it, and that's it. But we have to be really careful about this. Now, as an architect, it would be easy to have like a shopping list of things, do these, this, this, and this, you know, and then, and then you, and we're going to approve you. You know, it's, it's easy to have that kind of stuff. Whether that's the right thing to do, in terms of, you know, what's your city going to look like when you're done? Is it going to look like everywhere else? Or, you know, are we, or are you just doing the future slums of tomorrow? There's an example, in the early 60s, there was, and some of you old guys, not, you're not necessarily that old, Mr. Hanam, but you probably read, learned about this in school, there was a, there was a housing development, when public housing really got really popular, and it was back east, there was a, a project that was called Prud Igo, and it was in New Jersey, I think. And it was a, St., okay, thank you. It was, it was a gigantic housing development. And it was in progressive architecture, it was on the front of that back in the early 60s, as this, hey, this great big whiz-bang public housing thing. But there were a lot of problems with the design of it. They got hopped on, on the, on the size and, and what it was doing, because it, it was a big box that people could live in, or a big, a group of boxes. What happened with that is, there were little things in the design that- What happened with that is, there were little things in the design, that little nooks and crannies, where people were getting robbed, attacked, killed, hurt, because it was in part of the design, and no one bothered to catch that. And so eventually, it was so bad, it got torn down. And this was supposed to be the, you know, the beacon of public housing. So I want to make sure that we're not going, starting that again. You know, we should have learned from that. And the state being as paranoid as they are, and just wanting bodies, boxes for bodies, you know, it's, you know, we have to be really careful about what we pick, that we still have some Pinole in the rules, and not just the same rules that, you know, everybody else has. So that's, that's kind of my concern about this entire process. We do have to do it. And back when we were doing the guidelines in 2005 and 2006, you know, there was a lot of legalese in terms of the words you used, and like, shall versus should was always a big deal about what that really meant, and, you know, and things like that. And that's kind of coming up again in all this. And now it kind of seems like it has a little bit different meaning than it did back then when we did the guidelines the first time around, at least when I was involved in it. So I do want to hear something conceptual about, you know, what's the guiding force behind all of this, you know, so we don't kind of roll over and fall off the table. Because that's going to be, you know, it's pretty much in terms of individuality of the city, that's good, you know, if we do that, that's going to pretty much be the end of Pinole. So those of you who like living here, and are interested in how it looks and how it's going to be to be here, that's the kind of stuff we have to pay attention to. So can we do that with these objective standards? Probably, but it's going to be really detailed. And, you know, we can't make it easy ourselves because it gets to be too super detailed if it means that we're going in a direction where they're so objective, they become subjective. So that's my concern about the whole thing and how it's going to go.
Could you give an example of how the, I mean, objective becomes too subjective? Because I see objective becoming too objective, or it becomes so rigorous that it, like, becomes impossible to meet. I've never necessarily heard the other way.
Well, when you have, you know, in order for it to work, in order for it to work in an area as a whole, where an area that consists of different types of areas and different types of maybe building styles, or different types of uses even, you know, each, when each use is going to have a certain group of characteristics that they're going to need in order for the use to function. And so if you have like a laundry list of things, you have to be 35 feet high, which, you know, pretty much everybody has something like that. Or like in this example, where it talks about, kind of be kind of like around everything else, everything, be kind of like what's around everything else, you know? And people have that, too. So that's a little more loosey-goosey. The 35-foot thing, as in that example, is actually an okay thing to have. So the question's going to be, depending, and we may, we may or may not have this problem, but depending on where you are in a given city, does that rule work everywhere? And so that's the thing, can it work everywhere? And the other question is, should it work everywhere? You know, there could be other, other criteria that are similar like that, as kind of like, more or less absolute as that is, that could be different.
Okay, thanks. All fair points. Commissioner Vice Chairman Menace?
I think a lot of what the objective standards are trying to do is trying to get rid of subjective standards, like compatibility with nearby buildings, or compatibility with neighborhood style, and replace them with more concrete, specific standards that can be applied, like for example, facade made out of X, Y, and Z materials. And you can identify what exactly the materials are, or facade similar to adjacent neighbor, but you can't do sort of broader subjective standards, like situation of the neighborhood, or basically vibes-based feelings, as it were. That's not objective. That's, you know, sort of the basis of subjective. And the problem with that, of course, is the subjective stuff's a lot easier to work with. We all sort of know what's meant by community character, or consistent with the nature of the neighborhood. But while you try and actually pin that down into concrete styles, and characteristics, and materials, and nature, and make it so it's reproducible and explainable, that's a lot harder. That's frankly, a lot of what we've spent months of time doing on the subcommittee, just, you know, turning more subjective language into more objective language where it's possible. And sometimes it's just not, and we just leave it alone because we aren't allowed to do new subjective standards anymore. And that's its own entertaining thing.
Thanks. Does anyone else have any comments? There'll be interesting meetings in July, August. Unless there's anything else on that item? We can move on to item G, new business. The item number one, zoning code amendment target timeframes, informational item on target timeframe for the planning commission review of anticipated zoning code amendments to implement housing element programs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to make this kind of very quick. Pretty much as part of the housing element update, we, there are some programs involved that require us to update our zoning code, update our, with different, different goals and policies, to be consistent with our housing element. And so a number of programs in our 2021 have tasks involving zoning code updates. And to kind of give you an idea, we put a, we put a table in the staff report to show you what we're looking at doing as part of that process. So in terms of updating what areas of the zoning code that we'll be updating within the next two years, so, or at least until October or November of 2024. So, so I, there's not a whole lot more to add, it's just that these are things that we need, that we said that we were going to do as part of the housing element update, and that these were, and these are, we've anticipated the PC review in these areas. And so we've got a couple that will be coming up here pretty quick. Basically, staff really has no recommendation at this page. And again, this is another informational item only, so.
Okay. Is Commissioner Sandoval, any comments or questions?
No questions at this time.
Commissioner Lam Julian?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Chair Martinez?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Benwellos?
So when you do the zoning update, are you going to try to roll in all these other things, too? Because they're going to have to become part of the zoning ordinance as well, right?
Some of it will, some of it won't. We'll have, we'll have to, we'll probably have to cross that bridge when we get to it. There could be some additional changes. That's something that we're going to, staff will probably figure out what, if there are certain changes that, then we might be able to make some changes at the same time as some of these. So that's something that we'll also be looking at as part of the objective standards that we've, that we've done. So there's just a lot of moving parts right now, and we just, to be honest with you, we just haven't put it all together yet. We're putting together the documentation, we're putting together the ordinances, we're putting together the actual documents. But in terms of how we're, how we're flushing out this information, and how we're going to get it to you, that is still being worked on. That's, that's all. I really, I don't have a crystal ball. I mean, yeah, it might be, we might have multiple changes in the zoning ordinance because of one thing affects another affecting another. So, but we're going to try, and where we, where we can see where there might be an area where we might be able to add a couple, we might, we might just throw some in there just so that we can, that we can move things forward, and that there isn't a repetitive, or there isn't another amendment to the zoning code, because the objective development standards requires that update, and the housing element requires that update. If we can do it all at one time, then, then we'll try and do that all at one time. But right now, we just try, because there's just a massive amount of stuff that we've got to get done in terms of the zoning amendment. So we're just trying to put, try to put it all together into one piece as fast as we can, as quickly as we can, and to make sure that everything is being reviewed properly and all that. So that's, so.
Yeah, it sounds like a lot.
Yeah.
I mean, so you're going to probably end up being triaging the zoning ordinance, pretty much, you know, depending on what's going to be going on, what's going to be, what have priority, or are there other things?
Yeah, probably, yeah. I mean, the zoning code amendments, I'll be honest with you, will probably take, probably take the next probably two or three years. I'm not, I mean, there's going to be, there's going to be different things that come up through this process, there's going to be different processes that come up. So you'll be seeing a lot of zoning ordinance text amendments probably in the next three or four years.
Okay.
Because of all of this work that we're doing. And hopefully, we can take it in big chunks, but there's, but yeah, it's going to be, it's a big lift on, on, on all sides. And so it's, so yeah, it could be, you know, I don't want to say a total rewrite of the zoning ordinance, but there could be a lot of sections that'll be rewritten.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of wondering if, it seems like it'd be pretty possible to, as you're doing it, you know, you modify something and you get it codified, but then all of a sudden, you find something, you have to pull it back out and do it again. I mean, that's, you know, that usually happens over years of a given zoning ordinance when there's done. You know, it usually takes the first couple of years to see how, to take it for a spin, you know? And when we did our zoning ordinance the last time, that's, we finished it right at the beginning of the downturn, and so there was no work, and no, no building. So it kind of sat there and went for several years before things started coming again. And then, then, then you saw the, kind of the redlining that needed to occur. So this, in this case, it sounds, it seems to me that it's going to be, you'll get it kind of worked out, and we'll have something, and then there'll be just some changes as we go along, which, you know, still really to be expected when you, when you have a new, so it's nothing, it's not anything that's, you know, catastrophic or bizarre, it's just, it always happens when you have a modified zoning ordinance. So it's just that there's going to be more things that may converge on each other than usual, because of all the different directions that are things are flying in from, so, so I can see that. So that's, you know, that's, it'll just be that way. That's, I mean, everybody will be doing it, you know, we're not the only city involved in that. You know, there are another 398 cities that are going to be doing the same thing, you know, so, and whether, it just depends on how successful they are.
And through the chair, I would just add, you know, compared to that last big zoning overhaul, besides for the zoning, the objective standards, many of these changes are very specific and sort of mandated by state law. So for, for better or worse, there's not sort of a, let's see how it plays out, it's just sort of, well, we got to do it, we got to change the definition of family and their code, or that sort of thing. But relatively more narrow than the broad, you know, objective design standards, or if we were going to sort of wholesale reevaluate what's allowed in what zone. So that might, I don't know, give the commission some comfort.
Yeah, well, that, to me, that's going to be a big overhaul, objective design standards. Is that, that's what you're saying, too, right? Okay.
Except for that.
Other than everything will be okay? Okay.
I think that's more narrow, too.
Yeah, like it always is, there's, you know, you go a year, and all of a sudden, oh, here's a little glitch in the thing, let's fix this, and then you do it, and then, oh, here's another one. And, and, okay, that, that makes total sense.
I think the commission may remember, I mean, just one example, sort of similar is, I forget, maybe the site right by Collins School, like, for some reason, it had a lot of medical center, but not a therapist's office, and it was like, why on earth? Just a fluke.
Oh, the dentist office?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So you see those sorts of things, so.
I have a bigger one like that that happened, when we had this matrix that had every possible use you could have, and the only one we didn't have in there was repairing guns out of your house. And someone came and wanted to do that, and that filled the entire thing here, so, with gun people. So it was a weird thing.
All good?
Yeah.
Vice Chairman Menace?
Sure, I guess I just have a brief question here. How were the various items, the various programs and tasks on this list prioritized? Like, how is it decided that basically we're going to do, update the ADU ordinance first, invent SB 9 constraints, and then updates for emergency shelters, and so on and so forth, rather than how to get in a different order?
Yeah, I could add a little bit to that. So we did lay out a program of which ordinance would be easiest to update, easiest being, you know, closest to state law, and we're just making some cleanup so that the language is closer to what is required anyways. So those would probably be going to you first. And then other ones are, such as the ADU ordinance, the ADU ordinance had been updated multiple times over the past couple of years or so, because the state, you know, they continuously want to add or tweak things in the ADU ordinance. So some of that is also like language that would be updated, and that would be coming to you next. So a lot of these are organized based on kind of the difficulty and the amount of like flexibility in the code that allows for modification.
And Justin, correct me if I'm wrong, some of, this is much more detailed, but the housing element itself had an implementation program and identified some broader timeframes for when certain things would get updated.
Yeah, and most of these, according to the housing element, have to be done within two years or so. So we're kind of prioritizing which ones are easiest to go through first, and then, yeah, continuing to work on the other sections as well as we go through. So that's kind of how this timeframe was laid out.
That makes sense. I just hope that that doesn't be, we'll have a bunch of really difficult steps left at the very end.
Generally not. Yeah, I don't think so, at least. And some of the ones at the very end might require some council input as well, so we might receive some feedback along the way to prepare those.
My only question is on regarding the housing element, sort of a little bit off topic of this, but when is the annual progress report due?
It's due April 1st of each year, and we've submitted it to HCD already.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes, it went to the council last meeting, I believe.
Justin, are there any public comment online, or anyone in the audience?
Nope, I don't see anyone online.
Cool. Any other further comments on this, questions? Otherwise, we move on to item H, the City Planner's Commissioners Report. I didn't even notice.
I guess this is a question sort of through the chair to Assistant Attorney Bog. Would this be the point where we could discuss the Planning Commissioners Academy, or does that need to be agendized as its own item?
So if you just want to give a brief update, you know, two, two-minute update, that can be something you can discuss now. If you want to have a more in-depth conversation about, you know, all that, we should agendize it for a future meeting. But if you just want to give a quick overview of, you know, what you learned, some sessions, that's something you could mention here.
Sure, so I guess I'd like to do that, but I'm not sure what order the chair wants to do it. Do you want to have me go first, or do you want to have, do it in the standard order?
If you raise it, so you can go ahead first, I wasn't sure if everyone wants to make a comment. I mean, I think it was a big discussionary item right now, so.
Right, so I guess this is sort of my report, is where we went down to the Planning Commissioners Academy, it was in Long Beach. It was actually raining down there one day, which was interesting, I wasn't necessarily expecting rain in Southern California. It was informative, there were quite a few sessions, the jeopardy was enjoyable, I think Pinole collectively got more points than any other city, so go Pinole as a collective team. There was some interest, there were some interesting points, let me see if I can pull them up in my notes here.
I guess, Rafael, is it a general summary, or do you have specific things you're reporting on?
I'm just checking to see whether there are things I could state generally, but don't go to the level of a more detailed report. There was a discussion of new laws and their potential impact on Pinole, I definitely think we're going to want to discuss that, but I'm not going to go into detail in that, obviously, because I imagine the city attorney's office is going to be writing up their own variant on that. As was mentioned earlier, there was discussion of objective design standards. There was a useful discussion on the relationship between planning staff and the commissions and the council, basically their different roles, how they could work together, how different kinds of engagement can work. And let's see, there was also a discussion on basically some stuff that's more hidden in the background, what's, what things you maybe don't see at the surface level on the commission, you know, like what things are going on behind the scenes with staff and their interactions with the public, like, why are meetings canceled all the time? Does that mean staff's not doing anything? No, it means staff's really, really busy. And there was also, finally, I wanted to note, one really great event that we encountered just wandering through Long Beach, one evening that wasn't part of the event as a whole, but that I wanted to highlight sort of for the city as a topic of interest. It was sort of a night market on a Thursday evening, where they had a bunch of sort of community organizations and businesses sort of blocking off a street in the city and selling things, like the farmer's market, but a little bit more complicated, and on a weeknight. So I thought that was interesting, and that might be something the city might want to consider in the future, not just having a farmer's market on weekends, but having sort of a weeknight, street shutdown, community business type event. I thought that was neat. So yeah, that's sort of my thousand-foot level overview of the academy.
And if anyone else, if you have any other comments, you don't have to, just if you wanted to report on anything. Otherwise, we could probably agenda something later on.
I would want to say one thing is, you know, when I was a brand-new planning commissioner, the city couldn't afford to send anybody at that time. So this was going on, it's gone on for a long time, but when I was new in 2005, the city didn't have the money to send anybody. So this is the first time I went on a, on like a function like this. to send anybody. So this is the first time I went on a, on like a function like this where it was a planning commission related thing. And you think, you know, after eight years on a planning commission, I would have figured it, some of the stuff out and some I did. But it was really nice to hear their, what they were presenting in terms of how planning commissions work and, you know, how, how you work with the staff and all, all these kinds of things. It was really kind of, you know, it was, it was really interesting to hear. And, you know, made me think of a lot of things over the years that have happened and why they happened and maybe why they could have gone a little better, why they went as well as they could be expected and, and how they went, you know, kind of just right, you know? So it was, it was really, I really, I'm really glad I went. I almost didn't go because I thought, well, this is kind of more for new people. But I went and I, I really got a lot out of it. I was really surprised how much I got out of it. So it was well worth it. Anyone who didn't get to go, I would really encourage you to go if you didn't get to go. Even if you've been on a planning commission for a while, you know, I would still go at least once. So it was, I really enjoyed that.
Thanks. Commissioner Sandoval?
Yeah, I, yeah, I just wanted to also echo some of the things that Commissioner Menace has said, you know, as a first time planning commissioner, it's, it was pretty informative for some of the things that they were discussing as well as, you know, better understanding our roles and what we can and can't do as planning, as a planning commission. So it was very informative and I think it was really a good way to kind of like start getting a deeper understanding of housing laws, planning, um, at like a bigger level compared to some of the stuff that kind of just comes along through the commission. Um, you know, better understanding of SEQA and some of the things that go on behind the scenes is, so it's a, it came back, you know, I got not, I, I was going to say like refresh, but maybe not refresh would be the appropriate word. Um, but you know, I came back with a lot of information to bring back to the commission and a lot of insight. And I also wanted to express my gratitude and thank you to staff for planning that. And I know a lot of work must have gone into that, all the coordinating with the hotels and everything. So thank you to the city for that.
Cool. Thank you. Um, Planning Manager Henham, we diverged while you were, your report.
I, I have nothing tonight, so I'll wait till next, next meeting, but I, right now I have nothing. Thanks.
Moving on to item I, communications. Anyone have any communications? Vice Chair Menace?
Sure. Just wanted to remind people, there's going to be a few events going on in the city this upcoming week. I'm not a hundred percent sure on this one, but I believe there's going to be the senior food distribution at the senior center tomorrow. I've seen different messages on that in the polls and on the city's calendar. So I'm not completely sure there, but I'm going off the city's calendar for my assumption that it in fact is happening. And then there's going to be a finance subcommittee meeting on Wednesday here at 3:00 PM. And then the community services commission is going to be having a meeting here at 5:00 PM on Wednesday. So I just wanted to let people know in case they're interested in attending any of those.
Thank you. Any other communications?
I, um, had the experience of having to go through the permit process in Pinole. And I was, I was really surprised how incredibly disappointed I was in it because of just, and granted, right now they're going through a big changeover where it's going to be more, more digital and there are things online and that kind of stuff, which is, which is sort of okay because most cities have screwed that up. So I'm, I have a little nervous about that, although I have greater faith that Pinole can do better than most cities have. Last week I got interviewed by this newspaper called Oakland Side because I had a really bad experience with the city of Oakland on doing a permit. And I sent an email to the mayor complaining and somebody called me back real fast and answered some questions, but then it led, one thing or another led to this interview to this newspaper who was doing an expose day on the problems with the Oakland Building and Planning Department. You know, and I've done projects in Oakland for 40 years. So it's, it's at a new low. When you, when it takes a year to get a building permit, you know, there's a problem. So, and so I was, and it was this thing, just as a side thing, was a thing where I had to put something, upload something and for whatever reason, my password didn't work anymore. And you know how you go and do a password, you just, they send a number to your phone, you put, type in that number and you're getting a password? I had to talk to somebody. And so when I called, I got a voicemail and he said, leave a message. And the voicemail wasn't set up. And, and, and I think that's, that's about the fifth time that's happened to me with, with Oakland. So, um, and my thing here was okay. And I can understand that there's some movement going on and I, and I appreciate that. But I was surprised that I couldn't find the phone number to the building department. I just happened to have it find in my phone later for the Pinole Building Department. So I called it, somebody answered, I got my question, but it bothered me that on the website it couldn't find the phone number. And that could have just been me not finding it. But that should be something that's like in red flashing at you when you're first opening it up, right? So that really, really bothered me. So I, you know, back when I first got on the planning commission, there was a lot of complaints about stuff taking forever to go through Pinole. And that's what generated the first set of guidelines. And there was a point where if you follow the guidelines, you walk in, the planner could almost approve your thing on the spot because we gave them the power to do that. And so then they just go get their permit. Now it seems like that's all kind of gotten watered down. So part of what will be going through, I hope that, you know, as all these little things that are coming from the state, well, hopefully the system will be a little better too. And so it was, I was just really surprised at the, at the, the trouble I had getting this permit for somebody. So I just want to, you know, we can always agendize here, because we did that before, an explanation of the process and see, you know, as people explain it, then all of a sudden you see the little bumps and bruises that come along with that because they have trouble explaining it. So I'd like to see that myself. If we, if we do it or not, that's, that's fine. But I'd like to see a presentation of the planning and building permit process, the nuts and bolts part of it, not the part that, conceptual part that we deal with, but somebody go into the counter and saying, I want a permit for this and see how it goes. Cause we did that, we did that before, you know? So that's all I had to say.
I think maybe for the community services engagement team as well, if there's that end.
Yeah, yeah, I can definitely report on, so we had our community engagement subcommittee meeting about quite some time ago. We did have a good discussion about some of the things that, some of the strategies that we want, kind of want to implement and some next steps for the city as well. I think that we're kind of looking to more to partner on with other departments and kind of try to get engagement as this, as the city as a whole and having multiple different agencies and departments and as well as the planning commission represented at these events to get feedback from, feedback from our constituents and feedback from the community. Anything else that you wanted to add? Okay. Yeah, yeah. So that was a lot and we should be, the city, we have our next steps and hopefully we'll be able to have something coming up in the works at some time in the, in the near future.
Well, what I was saying is to follow with what Tim said, demystifying the building permit process from a community engagement side. I mean, that's where the rubber is rode. It's the people actually going and applying for permits and understanding that that just, I mean, I think the original impetus of the planning, that engagement work was to demystify what's going on from the planning side, but also maybe from Commissioner Pinellas' point is the building permit side as well. Like, how do people work through that and understand where they're at in the process and from the community side?
Just to answer Commissioner Pinellas, I believe Sarah, in code enforcement, I've, I recall at several community events, she actually has like a little flow chart of what the process looks like when you're getting your permits. And she actually did a presentation with Roderich, which, which demystified it. Maybe we can incorporate that into our community engagement, plan to just bring it full circle and really bring in all of the departments and kind of demystify what the city does behind the scenes to make it work for us.
Yeah, I'd like to see that presentation here then.
Yeah, my apologies for missing the question, but definitely that's something that the subcommittee can, can look into.
Cool. Great. Are there any other communications? Commissioner Lamgillian?
So at the Commissioners Academy, I did connect, was, I did have the opportunity to connect with other commissioners from other municipalities and hear what their best practices were, what kind of their bragging rights, what they're doing there. And I look forward to continue having those conversations and bragging about what Pinole's doing and kind of sharing the wealth there. Also, I have been in communication with staff regarding the crime matrix. I don't have an answer right now, but I can provide that when I do have an answer and an update for that. And just to echo, uh, one of the sessions was what happens behind the scenes at planning. And they had a picture, a visual of an iceberg. And I just remember as, as a normal citizen, you, you don't really see what the city staff does. And you're like, they just, they just appear, they cancel, you're not sure what they do. And then really appreciating here as a commissioner, how much work they put in and then having someone explain the depth and just the, the mountains of work that they do behind the scenes to make it happen for us every day is just great. And I just want to say, thank you guys. Appreciate you. I'm complete.
Great. Thank you. Is there any other communications? Item J, our next meeting will be the Planning Commission regular meeting on April 8, 2024 at 7:00 PM. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting.